State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole, because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now houses a lawnmower. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero turn motors. We have a full line of the steel wheat trimmer and chainsaws, just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need. Come see us, we'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Gwin and Fayette. We've been serving the people of Northwest Alabama for 23 some odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Condition. We've been family owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and like commercial HVAC systems. So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Gwin to Soligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Beville State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Beville State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at (205) 487-4327.
I'm your guy, individual. We're here to be your bestest.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the December 5th, 2023 Winfield City Council Meeting. Hardly been 12 months already, I can remember, but it is bringing another year to the end. First item on the agenda is approved minutes for November 21st, 2023 meeting. I need to ask for a motion to approve those minutes if nobody's got a question or comment how it's been recorded. (inaudible). We do an annual membership with C3. They've been in, it's been listed under C3 for about 10 years now, close to 10 years when there was EDA. A lot of times they question, which is, we go by Northwest Alabama EDA now, our annual membership is $25,000 for what we've always donated to this. Sometimes they question with some of the council members, sometimes I notice they fill out the getting their money's worth for the $25,000. I want to speak a little bit on that, on that part. I've been with Tom. Tom, this is going on your third year. Tom's third year, he took David Thorneell's place. David, I think retired, I don't know, I can't remember how long he'd been with. I guess he'd been C3 from the start. Went to C3 Northwest Alabama EDA, I guess is when Tom, when David Thorneell had started with. Tom, we've had several conversations on different projects and things that we try to locate here, you know, and everybody, kind of, I say everybody, a lot of people out in the general public don't realize what the C3 or Northwest Alabama EDA does. They said everything, Hamilton's getting everything, you know, well, Hamilton has got Exit 16, 14, 11, 7, and 30. We got one, Exit 30. Hamilton don't have to do a whole lot of work, a lot of times, to get, get things to come to them or to locate there, because a lot of times it comes to them. They want to be in the county seat, or they want to be where all those exits are. Intersections, you know, means a lot. At each one of those highways, the one goes to Red Bay and one goes back toward Hackburg, you know, comes off the interstate, up there to Exit 16, and the other two go downtown to Hamilton. Those, those advantages helps Hamilton locate and get a lot of stuff to handle. Tom met with me probably about six months ago, well, not probably six months, the way time flies, could have been probably four months ago. We met at King Cutter to discuss needs. King Cutter needed to, in their line of work, and we had some discussions and they spoke on behalf of what they were going to do. Tom set that meeting up and asked me to attend. They have applied for a grant. They're fixing to do a $3 million, if you want to, $5 million, $3 million, $2 million, $3 million, probably, a $3 million expansion, I think, to $2 million equipment. $5 million expansion, and Tom worked with them to get them a grant and help, to help make that go smooth for them. That's one thing Tom has done in the last six months. We've had, we've met two different times on prospects for at Exit 30 over the last year in trying to push our exit. They, they're redoing a, or doing a, an ad that they're putting out, let Tom, not get Tom to speak on behalf of what they're fixing to do for us, a digital launch for us, primarily pushing Exit 30. They're doing a Brownsville grant that we're fixing to take, that Tom has, Tom has been over, has overseen and applied for this grant, and has got this money to be used at Exit 30 for different things, for us, our sites, for us prep for stage one or two, and site rig, and that's what the Brownsville studies and different things is. That grant's probably over 150, 150 filed, 200 filed, that we're going to, go ahead, Tom, to speak on that, speak on the Brownsville grant that you're working on right now and that ad that you're fixing to launch.
Thank you, Mayor. The Brownfields, EPA Brownfields grant is a $500,000 assessment grant, and the, but there's a, we'll spread that around three counties, but there's a Brownfield site near, kind of near Brilliant, coal, former coal site, but the entire interchange, we're prepared to spend between $100 and $200,000. That's, some of it's kind of traditional, like the Brownfield, that existing coal site, but we can do a lot of planning work with that, we can do a lot of due diligence, environmental studies. If you're, if you have, I'll say about 400 acres on the north side of I-22, that's included in kind of the area that we would study, we can do the endangered species, cultural resource reports, wetlands analysis, really a whole range of studies, kind of environmental studies through Brownfields, and even do plant, kind of a planting, conceptual plan for the whole entire Exit 30 interchange with the, and the plan will be kind of pretty pictured, so we can market to developers and to companies on why it's a really great location for business. So I would urge the council to kind of stick with us at least for one more year. If you want to evaluate us, as I said, we're going to spend $100, $200,000 at that exit, and it won't all be specifically confined to a Winfield property or tour station, but that's a key exit for you all, and we're going to be spending a lot of money there. Also applying for another $250,000 grant through Innovate Alabama. This will be kind of a little bit more kind of small business entrepreneurship focused. This grant, if we get a grant like that, we spend it throughout all three counties, but we definitely focus on some of those resources, especially in our membership communities. And then, as the mayor was saying, we did a video that, I don't want to get into cost, but pretty much around the ballpark of what your contribution would be. It's a, it's a three county video, we're marketing, promoting the entire region, but it really does focus a lot on I-22, and the Exit 30 interchange is kind of a star in the video, and it's going to be really cool. It's got this other group, this high-tech group, to kind of give it an interactive component to it. It's going to be a feature part of our marketing effort. Between those three things, this is, we're making significant investment, and it's important for us to have kind of everybody contributing. I mean, we have a neighbor in county, won't name any specifics, but they've kind of tried to go hard half-time with part-time economic developments. I think it's been a little bit of a struggle, and if you try to kind of do these things on your own, it's really expensive. So by us all kind of pulling together our resources, we can do big stuff, but I think when, when there's somebody sort of falls off, it gets harder, and we kind of have to, so we can, we can do a lot throughout the three counties, but we're going to have to focus resources in our member communities too at the same time, and we're looking to invest a lot of money this year.
When is that posted out?
When does the, the video or the?
Yeah, all of them.
The video, we have a draft of it, we kind of previewed it, and then we got some feedback from some folks, and now the final version should, will be ready in the next couple of weeks, and you'll be able to see it. The advertisement portion, I have where we're out there trying to spread it kind of to audiences outside the region, that'll happen over the next sort of three, four months.
You got video of what we got on the interstate?
Correct. Well, it's the video, it's a three county video that does, it's kind of, the whole video starts with a map, it zooms in on I-22, and then specifically takes a close look at three of the industrial parks, Exit 30 being one of kind of the featured locations in that video.
How long have y'all had this video?
Well, we have had the draft for a couple of weeks, but we're waiting on revisions, and it'll be launched in the next couple of weeks.
I appreciate that, Tom.
I can show, yeah, I can show you the draft, but it's not the final version that is for public consumption.
I've got, I had Tom to give me a list of C3 funding contributors. Do you see a problem with publicly announcing who these sponsors are?
Not at all.
You've got, you've got public funders, which is West Alabama EDA, CD of Marion County, Marion County Commission, Barr Creek, Burriet, Gwin, Hamilton, Berry, Fayette, Land Island, Lamar County Commission, Billford, Soligent, Vernon, Vernon IDB, Fayette County Commission. Those, those are the public ones. Any private funders are Tom Bigby Electric, CO Bank, Tom Bigby, Northwest Alabama Gas District, Alabama Power, Fayette Water Board, Alabama Tech Network, Bank of Vernon, First National Bank, Northwest Regional Health, Holiday Inn, State Banking Trust, Hank County Bank, First Citizen Bank, Winfield, West Alabama Bank, Lister Hill, Carrington Union, Alabama Carrington Union, Fayette Medical Center, Shop and Save. That's, that's the 2023 funding, fund for people, organizations that's funded, have funded C3. By that many people sponsoring this community effort, this three counties, of the effort to, you know, it comes to a point, it comes to in your mind, well, we're not getting enough money for it. Well, it's not, it's not something that you can see happen overnight, it's not something that you can see every time that something happens or everything. You should be getting things at your exit, or getting things in your town that you're not getting, but it's all these people together making this organization possible. I mean, it's just like, you know, a college football team without a recruiter recruiting good players, they probably don't have a very good team. If we don't have somebody at these places right here that I'm fixing to tell you, the different conferences and trade shows, if we don't have somebody representing our county, which would be three counties that's involved in this, these conferences that he attends to to try to make things happen for us in our community, it's the EDA winter conference, your town Alabama conference, EDAA summer conference, Stand Up Rule Conference, Southern Automotive Conference, IFT Food Expo, CMX, that's Advanced Manufacturing, AMA Supplier Diversity Conference, that's Automotive, Alabama Automotive Manufacturers Association. I mean, that's a list of the conferences that he tends to not, and he has, he makes a trip or two to Washington, I think, the town when we need him to, to speak on behalf of anything that we need for his automotive, different things, you know, when Alabama kind of locates something, we're comfortable our exits out there, just like they did Dynamo, like they have done in Vance for Mercedes, it's like they did on those I-22 Toyota. I, you know, I think it's, it's going to look bad if we don't be part of this group that supports this effort to try to better the communities and try to pull industry manufacturers to our area and looking out for the industry manufacturer that's here now, like he's doing, like he's doing with King Cutter. And I understand you've been experiencing some time with Mr. Bowman down in Lamar County, at the plant that they've got, that they're working with down there. You know, based on the effort that everybody else is putting in, I just take a seat, see us pull out this year, like he said, I think we need to, you know, at least give it another shot, another year, and see what you think after that, but it's my recommendation to the council, based on all the other people that's involved in trying to make this an effort to work, it's my recommendation to the council that we extend this another year of C3, our membership. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask for a motion to go with my recommendation, to go with another year of C3. So by no recommendation, I take it that all the council members that's not on board to?
I made, I went outside the council, and I asked some business people what their thought of C3 was. Most businesses I talk to, they're going to be crazy not staying. If they can see the movement going forward, just think of getting, beginning to happen. You know, I understand to some extent how long it takes for some things to show up, and if just this one thing right here is responsible for his efforts, it's worth about that a dollar.
I mean, it's kind of hard to put a price on being able to, like, to get manufacturer to land something here. I mean, if you take the money that they have, that he's been able to draw here for us, Brownfield money and the different money for us advertising, whatever, the money that they've spent trying to market our place, and the money that they've got back through grant, okay, you take, you take four years, that's $100,000 investment that we made, you can't put a price on 20 jobs for five or 10 years for this community, if you got, if it's not the 20 jobs and they last five to 10 years, what's that worth? I mean, is that, is it, you know it well worth more than $100,000, the investment that you made. I just, I've been, you know, I go to Washington every year myself, and it's just like, you got the big, you got bigger companies that's got people sets outside the doors constantly, you know, push for this or this, for their efforts for what they want, and without somebody there representing you, I can promise you, you're not going to get very good results if you don't have somebody there for you, because in my position as a part-time mayor, even as a full-time mayor, you cannot be at all, you can't be, you can't answer and be everywhere you need to be for trying to, you know, to get something to, to put your, put your city out there. And we've got to look at the population, we're 4,500, 4,800 population, and that, I mean, we're just not, you know, we're, you know, we're doing, making efforts for housing and water and sewer and making things. We've got some manufacturers supporting, which is going to bring more housing here, I think. We've got some people, I've been talking to, developers, home builders, which I talked to Tom about, you know, what I'm going to do at the end state for is water and sewer. That is, that's just not about time, but not have somebody representing our county, representing our city and our county. I mean, $25,000 is a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money if you, if you land that one particular 80-plus job manufacturing. So I'm going to ask again for a motion to go forward with C3 of the other year. James, you made the motion? I've asked for a second. So y'all are nays on renewing our contract for our deal with C3?
When he came last year, I told him I'd give it one more year, and I still hadn't seen nothing. He comes in tonight, starts talking about the land that we got on the other side of the interstate. I've been talking about it for, ever since I came as a city member, council member, and every time I bring it up, nothing to say it. Now, since we had voted on this, it has come up, and I'm just wondering why now we started talking about the land on the other side of the interstate.
So he's included that, he's not, he's not singling that out, that's what, he's including that in, that's, that's one of our industrial sites up there, as well as where we're at now, where Ticken is and across the road from Bree is. It's three locations, three industrial sites up there. That, that whole, the whole Exit 30 is in that. He's not, he's not singling out that 200 some plus acres. It's about 400 acres total in that whole area.
We ain't got the 200 on that side.
About that 400 acres that he's marketing. We've been working, we're trying to get a grant now for, for decel land on the north side, for the development of both sides of that property now. He's a player, he's helped and worked with that as well. I'm not going to beg the council, I mean, the council can, you know, you can do, you can not do it, or you can do it, or whatever, but I think it's a, I think it doesn't look good that we're not part of this, or part of this trying to do our part. We won't single out, we single out. I think James understands the importance of, by making his motion, I think he understands the importance of having somebody representing our county, representing our county and our city.
Well, I mean, I do too, but I also made the same comment. I mean, it's been three years. The first year, I felt like we didn't have any time to think about it, because we had just got sworn in in December, and we made this vote in January. So at year two, you know, we were asked, you know, he did come and give some explanation, and we all said that we would, we would give it one more year. So last year was going to be a no for me, and it came around again, just give us one more year, just one more year. And that's when, you know, they were talking about the, all this virtual stuff, and so we decided to do one more year. And this is the second time in one year that he has even been here, and, and I said last year, I, one more year, and if I did not say something, I was not, I wasn't going to do it again. And I, I try to stand by my word.
Okay, you're, both y'all a no, you're a no, Larry? Or you're a no? Yeah, okay. Now, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you how this is going to work. It's just like it was when we had a problem with the county and we had to have legal representation to correct an issue with taxes, merit medical, hospital tax. They're still going to work for Exit 30. C3's still going to push for Exit 30, because they're, 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 by us not, by y'all voting not to be a member, a supporting member, they're not going to stop working to push this exit, because this is part of, this is part of Marion County, they're Marion, Lamar, and Fayette County. They're not going to cut that piece of pie out because we didn't support it. So I want the council to understand that if something comes here, it wasn't because they backed out because we wasn't supporting, it's because they put forth the same effort that they put forth before. But by these contributors, contributed to it, they're able to put him in a position to be able to go to these shows and go to these places, try to market the counties, the three counties or whatever. So let it, let it be known that C3's still going to be working for us, even though we did contribute to the organization. So we've got, we've got one yes and three no's. I appreciate it, Tom.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is King Cutter expansion. I think everybody's got a copy of what King Cutter wants to do. I had, I need to probably ask this here, based on Tom's efforts for King Cutter, you want to explain that while you're here, Tom, a little bit, what we've got going on for down there?
So King Cutter is planning an $85 million
So King Cutter is, is planning an eighty-five million dollar expansion. As the mayor said, that's a divide between new building, uh, construction and new manufacturing, equipment, machinery and a little bit of personal property. Uh, we like, we, what we really like to see with these is the companies, it's, they're investing in the Winfield facility. It's, uh, projected to create about fifteen jobs over, over the first three years after the project. So they'll, they'll spend about a year kind of doing the construction and doing the, buying the equipment, bringing everything, getting everything online. And then kind of from that point on, a year after that, adding five, kind of five jobs per year for about three years. Fifteen jobs, I mean, by itself is a, is a really good thing, uh, really good company. But on top of that, I think, as I was saying, it just shows they're investing in that facility, they, they see the future there. So we always like to see these, even if it's, sometimes we'll have capacity upgrades that don't involve any employment because they're, sometimes these things will make the, uh, the operations more efficient and kind of increase their productivity, uh, per employee basis. This one's really great because they're spending five million dollars and adding people, investing in the facility and really kind of putting, putting their, uh, their, their future into that facility. So would really strongly recommend that, that you support this. I mean, with your setup, uh, the schools always get their portion of, of, even with an abatement. And, uh, we always look at it, at it as, this is a, it's, it's sort of found opportunity that, uh, we can't always just assume the company's gonna make an expansion so that, I mean, I think part of when, when they do make these expansions, they're, they're looking to partner with you and, and kind of, um, come to the table with that. So the abatement's really part of that partnership. And as I said, the schools still get, still get their full, their full portion, um, and the company's investing in, in your community. And happy to answer any questions on kind of how the dollars break down or how the process works, um, and so forth.
I think they pretty much understand the abatement, the taxes on sales, tax on equipment purchase. I strongly recommend that we do this for King Cutter. It's part of this community since the early eighties, uh, maintaining the poor and public, somewhere in the neighborhood, a hundred, close to a hundred employees there. Making expansions and always better for our, you know, community. It's local owned, it's not a, it's a very big company, uh, known worldwide for its equipment that they sell and make there. Like I said, it's local owned people. I think that, uh, it's my recommendation to council that we, you know, pass this, you know, application for the, the abatement of the taxes.
It's not something that we hadn't done previously in the last couple of months. Sir?
I said it's not something that we hadn't done in the last couple of months. Keith made a motion, I'll give a second, give, uh, James second, all in favor. Appreciate it, Tom.
Thank you.
Say how big the new building's gonna be?
Sir?
How big the new one's gonna be?
Uh, do you know the size of that building?
I think one reason that, I don't know if I got that, Tom, you, you mentioned the number of new jobs. I think the reason that the number of new jobs are lower than you might expect for that size expansion is because of the technology that they're gonna be putting in. It's gonna be more up to date to where you don't need as many manpower. And you, that's a thing of the future, it's gonna be that way in every new big, every big manufacturing. There's gonna be more robotics, more computerized stuff, and there's gonna require fewer, fewer people. So the people that you're gonna have there running this stuff is gonna be probably better paid people that are gonna start. So that's, you know...
Right, and so pretty recently, I mean, we've had a little bit of economic headwinds, but we had a very low unemployment rate in our three counties. So then the, the manufacturers were really kind of hard pressed to find people. So if there's a little more efficiency, or the wages go up a little bit, you can do more, bring a few less people. But they're still adding, uh, they're projecting to add, while being more efficient in increasing productivity, so really good project.
But I imagine the equipment's just gonna be state-owned stuff. I mean, you know, you're talking about two hundred, two million, two hundred thousand dollars, well, the equipment's going into two million, three hundred thousand dollars there. And then when you look at the, the, the personal property part of that right down here, it's five hundred thousand dollars. And it says computers, computers that are going in to do all this, is where the technology's coming in to run the equipment that they're putting in.
Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Uh, next item on the agenda's old business. Keith, I told you, you got any old business?
How much more flash scale them like, yeah, I haven't cooked?
Uh, pour concrete today. I talked to Luke, he feels like they probably will finish it up, uh, hopefully by the latter of this week or four, I'm gonna say. I guess, I hope they do because if not, that's not gonna hold the water anyway. Ain't big enough.
And they go the same size?
We gotta do what we gotta do. Or ZMA, I mean DMA, or is it, well, FEMA?
Oh, they want the smaller ones.
We couldn't do, no, we couldn't do what we wanted to do based on the amount of money that we gave. Back like it, it's gonna be what it was, might be a little bit better what it was, it's gonna be concrete versus a mortar if you can, but yeah. There's a lot of water there then for it. Anytime you got more development up this way, it's only gonna be more.
Or we run out of space?
Cut trunks, cut trees, it don't, keep the water flowing down. We got a lot of development going on that way. Yes, I see it. Brian here?
Um, I don't really have any old business and I don't know if I can mention, um, ribbon cutting. I don't know. I was gonna mention, um, Kelly Rose, who has opened K Rose. She is planning her open house and ribbon cutting, uh, Main Street is gonna do ribbon cutting on Friday.
They have it in their folder.
Yeah. Um, her open house is gonna start at four, the ribbon cutting will probably be about ten minutes prior to that. And then, um, there is also gonna be a job fair, um, hosted at the Civic Center on December twentieth. That's what this is in her packet. Bailey Bussi, who's actually, um, she's a Winfield native. They're holding a job fair because she's wanting to bring this, um, company to the world. Um, and they're hoping to, um, allow maybe anywhere from ten to fifteen jobs, depending on how many people she has to work. So I wanted anybody to kind of know about that. It's a, you can look them up online, it says Family Resource Home Care. They do a lot of things for the elderly, like help them with assistance as far as even things like shopping. And helping them to pay their bills, um, transportation, all that kind of stuff. So, um, I think she's, I think she's in Texas, and it's really big in Texas, and she's wanting to bring one here. That's December twentieth.
Who is she, off she advertising, please?
Well, she just sent this to me and I was sending it out and some emails, um, and I posted it on Facebook. And I'm sure she's doing some of her own, um, advertising. But, um, and depending on the need from around here, because I know I think she reached out as far as, I guess, I don't know if she wants to go to places where there's more elderly. But depending on the response, I mean, she said there could be even more jobs than that. And then hopefully, um, in two weeks, there's another business that she's already bought her business license, um, that's gonna go in, in the, to the patio. She's hoping to open in about two weeks.
Not more? You start the patio?
Um, and it's, it's gonna be a miscellaneous specialty retail shop. Hopefully in about two weeks, she'll be opening it. Other than that?
Johnny?
That's a diagram of layout of the lines on pickleball courts. I got, sorry, on pickleball courts. This bid that we sent out, about a hundred and twenty by a hundred and eight contracts lab. And I've got everything that the man is demanding and gonna do. We may have should have studied that a little bit better before we print that. But part of, part of what he's gonna do, what he's gonna do is after the concrete, which I think the pen's worth for a new concrete slab, which I've already got somebody looking at that concrete, and grinding the latex surface that's on it down, leveling it. And by spring, this, none of this can start before the temperature is fifty-five degrees and dries. So it's gonna be in the spring sometime, sometime before, he, he'll even think about coming up here and doing this. Uh, and I haven't figured the cost per se on that size piece of concrete. But I do know that the paint to do a pickleball court is about twenty-five hundred dollars. That's a thirty by sixty. Lights can run you about seven thousand dollars, I don't know what a fence is gonna run you, it's probably gonna be another seven or eight thousand dollars. And the concrete slab, uh, thirty by sixty slab's gonna run you somewhere around nine thousand dollars. Part, what he's gonna furnish on this, I'm not for, is painting these stripes on, you take one of the tennis courts and you paint these stripes on top of that tennis court, it's gonna look like a hopscotch ground out there. I mean, it's gonna be lines going across lines and he's gonna furnish two portable nets in this process, which I'm for him painting those, painting this tennis court, bringing our two temporary nets, which the butter nets that I can find are about twenty-four hundred dollars, that's the best ones that you can buy. And I don't know what his specs are, what he's planning on buying, I don't want to tell you exactly what he's planning on putting in the nets. That those temporary nets and the way they're designed, we put anchor bolts on the end of them and they're permanent nets. So if we can do, completely refinish the tennis court, put two pickleball court, ball courts in with lights and fence, for a lot less than that bid we had to begin with. I mean, we've already got thirteen thousand dollars invested in this. And if we don't do anything else, we've lost thirteen thousand dollars. And then we're gonna have to spend some more money whether it's not, it's gonna be, and it may be, but it's gonna be cheaper for us to paint them ourselves and stripe them ourselves than we give him thirteen thousand dollars. And just light it off.
To what you're saying.
So after the first year, I'll, I'll have some firm figures on what I think, I'm hoping somebody'll give me some figures of what it's gonna cost to put the slab down. I know what it's gonna cost to paint them, I know what the lighting is gonna be, I don't know how much fence is. But after the first year, I'll give you what my projection is, is what it's gonna cost.
So what you're looking at is two, two pickleball courts beside, by theirself?
By themselves and by the tank.
And redo the tennis court?
Yeah. And to tear that court out up there and then bring a truck in there with concrete, you're gonna tear up some much stuff up there, but it's gonna be unbelievable. You gotta take every fence up down there, the practice, the ball practice, uh, field, you're gonna have to go up that bike with a, a concrete truck. You're gonna have ditches up there. Just no good way to get in there and do that. You can't do it.
You got a place picked out, put two pickleball courts?
Yep, they've already got some land down there by the, uh,
By the tank.
By the tank.
Between the tank and that?
Relatively level down there already. Won't take much of a rate to get it down and get it compacted. Put two separate, one's right there. But four, we can put four down there.
It doesn't cost twice as much to build four?
Well, I figured it's gonna cost you. If I figure for one, for one, it's gonna cost you twice as much to do it.
Well, with a project like this, though, generally speaking, you could, you can build, you can build more.
Yeah.
It doesn't double your cost because there's so many other costs built into it.
Where you're saving, where you're possibly. Well, you know, you might save money on lighting.
But when you look, the true cost of the paint, the true cost of paint's gonna be twice as much on four as it is on two.
That's true.
The cost of concrete's gonna be twice as much as it is on two. There's another place, if you're gonna possibly save, it's gonna be on fence and lighting.
And dirtwork.
And dirtwork. Yeah, dirtwork's not gonna be twice as much.
No, it's not gonna be that expensive.
And the lights not gonna be twice as high because the lights, two, you could probably get away with a little bit more with the four.
Right.
And the fencing is not gonna be exactly double either.
Right, because you're not, you're not...
Yeah, so...
Which, one, one of these things, you know, I would pick a ball court all over South East United States. And they don't necessarily have fences all the way around each, say, one. I mean, you don't want it to where you're gonna have to run over them. The bad thing about having up tennis courts is if you knock the ball over on the tennis court and they're playing tennis over, you gotta wait, wait, go over and get your ball. You know, I never heard of pickleball in my life. But when you start looking at how many there are in the United States, how fast they're growing, it's unbelievable.
That's why I said four instead of two.
Yeah, it's unbelievable.
Well, and Tina has got a grant that she's already gotten approved for seven thousand dollars that can go towards fencing and sidewalk.
Well, she's got seven thousand dollar handicap fencing and sidewalk to go to the tennis court.
Well, but it can be used, I mean, it's gonna have to be done.
It's gonna have to be handicapped.
It has to be handicapped.
It's tied to handicap. But I will have you a real close model, figure what I'm thinking of, what we ought to play for. But it's, but it's the same, redoing that tennis courts right where they are. Let's say what's got cracks, well, they make something to put in those cracks. When you put that latex paint on the top of it and you don't roll it on, you take a squeegee and you squeegee on, it's gonna be that thick on top of it.
That fills in all the cracks.
I watched the video the other day.
You watch it, you've seen the video, you know what I'm talking about. It's not rocket science to put this paint down, to dump it out and squeegee it around. You know, it's not rocket science.
And it didn't take him long at all.
No, no.
And he was walking on it and he would leave even leaving footprints.
Right. But you gotta be at fifty-five degrees and rising.
Man, it'll be no time soon.
No, well, the new concrete's gotta sit for thirty days. So you put your new concrete down, anticipating when the, when it's gonna be that temperature. So, you know, springtime is before you can even start to do anything. But I'll have to...
You got any, any other business?
I think that's enough, maybe not, I haven't mentioned straight lines up here.
Why, go ahead. Mention it.
Yeah, I think it's good. I'm sure that we could get, before two-year anniversary comes, which is two weeks from now.
Larry?
Uh, I met with Chief Burleson and Assistant Chief Gary Hamlet here tonight. Fred's coming, pushing some vehicles and I came to get me the models of all the vehicles and the mileage on and everything. And I think everybody got a copy of it. And I understand this wasn't budgeted, so we'll have to work around that. But, uh, if you have any questions, Gary or I may, it probably has the answer.
Yeah, they, what he's wanting to do is, uh, surplus, we've got a list of those four surplus, I, I met with him as well. He's got, uh, two thousand five Chevy Tahoe and a two thousand fifteen Ford Explorer and a two thousand sixteen Ford Explorer and a two thousand seven Dodge Charger. You know, those, that, that one's eighteen-year-old and then the other one there's, um, sixteen-year-old. We've been, we have, our, our maintenance deals have been very well under control based on how it used to be. I strongly recommend that council go ahead and let them purchase, is it three units, three, three units, four, five units?
Why did you go with heating cars instead of SUVs?
The size, uh, for having more maintenance out of the vehicle. Because a lot of our, some of our officers are SWAT members, they got a lot more equipment to tow. And the bags are a lot bigger on them than, uh, car... are a lot bigger on them than cars, so they were a total lot more stuff.
And Brett told me something about the, the new vehicles got a different kind of motor in them, and they're not lasting too long.
The new Ford, new Explorer?
Yeah, and the body style is, where you can't interchange the lights and all that.
Now, two of these vehicles y'all don't use anymore, correct?
Correct.
My last one, tired of, and...
Mayor, Brett, I don't know how you all feel about this, but that last item on the surplus, that $2,007 Dodge Charger, it's got a story behind it, if anybody's interested in it, but Bill West got that car for Shane Hughes, is that right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
After the shooting, and it's got a story behind it, and Shane always stole Brett if it was ever anything done with it, he likes having an opportunity. So I don't know how you all feel about that.
We've been it out.
Shane gave us seven years service here and...
I'd like to have to dive a little bit on what we could do with four of that. I don't know, I mean, I, I, I just have to, you know, I don't have any problem with what the council wants to do, it's just, I thought I could, I can.
We can declare, we can declare a surplus tonight, and we can actually decide what we wanna do with four of them. How many units is this, or something?
Four or five.
Four, now, with three of them, and just hold off on doing anything on that one, and I don't want to, I don't want to answer that one off the cuff and just say, I'd like to think about that, I mean, look into it, see if there's something.
I'll come in first.
Well, we have...
Yeah, I'll be in the office.
Bit it up?
No.
Could we just bid it up?
We, we can go ahead and declare the surplus tonight, and then go ahead and decide what we wanna do with three of them, and just hold off on that fourth one on what we're gonna do with it, we've declared it, we, we declared surplus, but we can't...
We can decide later what we can do with that fourth one.
What, how we're gonna bid it or what we're gonna do with it. You go ahead and take action on three of them. List them on Gov. Deals or whatever you do about that, set reserves, and you go ahead and take that action tonight, get that all set, and do it.
That's the way we, uh, our leases, I mean, we've been doing real well with the way we're turning these vehicles over, and it's my recommendation to the council that we go ahead and let them surplus those four vehicles, or those, put those out for surplus, and then go ahead and Gov. Deals for the three of them, and hold up on the fourth one, and then let them go forward with those other vehicles. Need to ask for motion to allow that to happen. June made a motion, Larry second, all in favor.
You don't want yours?
No.
You're a big... You don't want, you don't want to buy it?
Mayor, I thought Mike Curder in there, he paid that money, you know, and they got off that big drug, but that's about all of them gone, $200, about $10,000, that money they owe. I didn't know it, not being budgeted, didn't want the action, we need to...
That's not, that's not what they're calling to do.
Did we send out notices?
We'll be the local.
Notices for interest rates or any kind of...
If we get the new ones, then bid the old ones local.
No, you're talking surplus?
Yes.
Then we'll put the new ones out, the last time we paid for them local, that's the way I'm thinking of it.
Okay, the surplus and the old ones.
Go ahead and surplus those, put those first three on, those top three on Gov. Deal.
Okay, or somehow it's still in use?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you'll have to wait till, you'll have to wait till they get their new unit.
Okay.
We don't have extra, that many extra courts.
Uh, one of them is, the other two are not in use.
Okay. If we're not using them, we can go, what, they're not using, we need to go ahead and let you surplus, I mean, go ahead and put them out for bid.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, you, you have anything else, Larry?
No.
Uh, when they, when they do finish down here on Midway, that's when the paving crew will be back. Uh, they asked me today, or Luke did, and I told him for sure Bryant Street and, uh, track.
Yeah.
I need the council to, to kind of, you know...
On Broadway and that one, you said they are...
Yeah, Broadway and that one that's in between, I'd like to see that finished over there.
Beaumont.
Uh, Beaumont, yeah, Beaumont. Beaumont and Broadway. Yeah, I'll go over there, gray circle, um, round, round gray circle, Broadway and Beaumont and the track and Bryant Street. If there's any I can get from it, I'll get, I'll get Luke to give me an estimate on it. Text you what that estimate is, I'll do those for...
We had...
Yeah, 'cause I thought we'd get all that.
We had two of them in there already.
No, I know, but she, she was asking me, she'd asked earlier, the last council meeting her back or two, how much money would, how much more would we be able to do after we did those? We got six 80s, 680 thousand, I think about that.
Seventy-one.
That's what we had.
Six seventy-one.
I think we were kicked this week.
Yeah, six seventy-one, we're at right now.
That's what the roads they have paved right now.
That's where I live, right now.
That's on counting the track and then...
And Broadway.
So then I feel like if we're gonna try to, you know, fair around a million or whatever, I still believe there'd be a little money left, you know, but we, you know, at that point, say I'm gonna give a nest, I think we might can get something else, uh, in that project.
Well, you need to go ahead and tell him, look at them other roads while they're gonna be over there, if we have enough, they can just...
You can, I don't know, red, uh...
Turn around, run across those, go to then on the little streets.
Two, near the gravel roads over there.
Yeah. Those, you know how most H R's moving?
I can get him to give him that, big question.
Says they're gonna be over there, I just see them leaving.
No, no, what he's talking about, Larry, you know what he's talking about, across Brentwood, that road cuts back through, comes back out by the funeral home?
Yeah, the way Stagley used to live on that circle.
Yeah, yeah. Pretty rough, so I'll get him to give us that. Uh, he won't ever give us any, any kind of timeline on this line. We sent word to the, uh, consultant, let him know that other piece of that lights here, he sent a message to, I think he copied me or me and Angie, he copied us, when he sent it to show it's electric, we're waiting to reply from them for us, uh, when they can come back. They, they did reply, that, that, about the mobilization.
Mid-November, you know, it was mid-November and we wouldn't have to pay another mobilization fee if they came during that time, we're way past that now.
Well, I think Angie knew, for them to pay that mobilization...
Well, I think it's like that, I think they were talking about, they were about $400 bucks, I think what they were saying. And I keep remembering when I replied in that email, if I replied in that email, but I didn't want $400 standing away getting a tractor, a signal line, I think $400 to get them out.
I think that was if they had to come before that time frame, we're past that now.
So we're only, we're trying to poke again to get it done.
So we do have everything here now.
Should have everything here. Strapping, so, I know we're, we're gonna do the strapping there between R W Harris and the railroad.
Still going angle?
Yeah, and then what else? Uh, the banks will be responsible for their strapping, for their parking, and then we got, I want to strip the parking, City Hall parking lot, if there's any, any other place that we...
Mallard.
You gonna have a parking lot claimed before you strike?
Can't, that, that's...
Where you coming on Mallard, on the other side?
Between, uh, where you turn left on Mallard, turn east, go by First Baptist, now, does it...
Well, you, you wanna put a center lane or what?
No, we're talking about parking spaces.
Where they paved the side of church, is that what you're talking about?
That church.
That's parking there on the side, is it handicap parking?
Um, there, there has been some handicap parking.
Because it was at one point striped, out there.
Yeah, from what they say, that seat right away.
Talking about in front of church?
Yeah.
Right there on the side.
Right on the side of church.
Maybe a little bit on Kirkwood on the church side, but I know Mallard, both sides are right away. Of course, it gets a little bit more narrow once you get past the church.
Anywhere else? I don't know where. Oh, yeah, I'm forgetting, I keep forgetting. Cajun Connection Downers got a heck of a business on the nice state, or open. With that Frisco dead, it comes up there and dead ends, I'd like when they come out, that little, that little section right there where Dead End, right at the edge of their building, where more petroleum park was, I'd like, I'd like to see us pave that, that road going in there, in front of the business. Because Mallard, just go to where Frisco Dead Ends.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's, they got people that come from Huntsville, Tuscaloosa, and all over, and I just, we need to, we need to fix that, that road in there.
That far up?
It ain't, it's not, right where the, where their building sits, it ends right at the back, right at the end of the...
Probably 3,800, huh?
It'd be, it'd be less than that, but, I think we need to pave that road up to there.
Just do the end of that building, or...
That's where, you can tell where it stops, you go up there, what more petroleum was, you can see where the turnaround is for more petroleum. We'd probably tell them, not mapped, how far it is.
I'll tell you something.
Oh, we got anything else? Oh, yeah, we got a unit out, it's a car. It's about, how old is that unit?
Two years old?
No.
At the community center?
Eleven-ton unit.
Um, those are put in maybe at 14, so nine, 10 years old.
So, I'm going, I'm looking for, see if five can, five of units that sell, and then we're hired putting in. But we got, we've got electrical box that needs to be installed first, and I'm working on getting that electrical box put in. Box is already in, it's just there waiting to get put in, that'd be out of service for a day or two and a half. Got to get it, 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 one leg, one side of, it's, the panel's dead.
Week after Christmas, big perfect time, they're done, they're gonna be closed?
Sure.
I said, week after Christmas, big perfect time, they're done, they won't be using. You get your electrical box, please, that'd be good.
Mayor on strapping, library, that pass, will the parking lot be considered?
We never did strap it when we paved that up there a couple of years back?
The, the park has tried to keep it striped with a ball field striping machine, and that's a temporary fix, that you have a commercial break paint, it might be longer lasting.
I don't see what they're calling it, but we've never, we've paved it several years back, a few years back, and we haven't had a good strapping, put that on.
Who does that now?
Strap it?
I think one or two companies. It's one of the, which I gave Luke their number, it's up here doing that parking lot down there at the, on Three Bridge Bottom, it's in the parking lot of Montgomery, that one of them, I tried to get Luke to stick it, maybe, 'cause they stay support behind, there's not one or two companies that does thermoplastic. That's all I got, I guess I don't have any else. Uh, I need, if nobody's got any other business, I need to ask for motion to pay the bills. Jeff, Larry made a motion to pay it. Keith second, all in favor. I need to, uh, ask for a motion to adjourn. Gina, keep all in focus.
State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today, we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down-home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole. Because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone, this is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now has a lawn mower. We're gonna have a full line of the steel zero-turn mowers, we have a full line of the steel wheat trimmer and chainsaws, just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint, to hardware, anything you need. Come see us, we'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Guen and Fayette, we've been serving the people of Northwest Alabama for 23 some odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year, and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year, and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year.
Hello, Lee Heinz here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air. We've been family-owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and like commercial HVAC systems. So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guen to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you, with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing on-site restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us, call us at 205-468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at 205-487-4327.